All right. So just another video. Uh huh. You've been speaking all of this meeting. You just have to walk up to this. That's okay. We're doing a hybrid meeting this time. Next time not, okay?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Speaking is all finished.
I'm sorry. I have a little thing or whatever and we're going out.
Your foot's big enough that you'll feel it. Okay, so that's July 15. Now, we have a meeting next week too, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, Lisa, are you ready? So, so he was very upset that, um, they wanted to kind of rush it through and push it under the table. And so I says, is there any connection there between people? And he never really got to answer it.
Yeah.
But he is, you know, I told him, here's my belief and...
Yeah. That's what I guess we should share. Um, I think it's a...
Yeah, Tommy.
I'm sorry, what, which project do you have for? Uh, the governments. Oh, okay. Nice to meet you. Yeah, if anybody's here for Forest Hills Estates, um, that's gonna be on next week, next Thursday at 6:00.
First thing on the agenda is a continued hearing for Strawberry Field.
Minutes, Bill.
What was that, Jim?
Minutes. Minutes.
Okay, everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
I make a motion to supplement it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continued hearing on Long Built Homes.
Okay, yes.
Um, Bill, we have, we gotta go back to Strawberry Fields. They asked for a continuance.
Um... Yeah, let's just read that out.
Uh, but we have to approve the continuance. Am I correct?
Yeah.
We have to approve the minutes, so...
We just did.
Oh, gee. Guys speak very softly.
Uh, okay, I motioned that we continue Strawberry Fields until July 15.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same thing with Long Built Homes.
Well, they're here.
They're here?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Where is he? Step right up. Get as close as you can so we can all hear one another.
So, yeah, can you just give, um, Long Built Homes is the developer over at the Hunter's Hill subdivision phase two. Um, Evan, when you're presenting, can you just stand up and speak a couple feet away from that?
The flat microphone?
Yes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to see everybody in person, for sure.
Yeah, it's good.
My name's Evan Watson with W Engineering, representing Long Built Homes. We're here with the Hunter's Hill project. A couple meetings ago, we submitted a notice of intent package for Hunter's Hill. So we all know that was started up years ago and completed the central phase one, thirty-four lots that was there. And then, it lay dormant, the order of conditions had expired. So we basically took the old plans, dusted them off. We wrote the report showing open plot for stormwater standards and submitted it to this board as a notice of intent. We had a meeting and it was asked of us to redeline the wetlands, because it has been some time. Uh, since then, we hired LEC, Brian Mann.
Who did you hire?
LEC Environmental. I've been with Brian Mann, but him and his group of professionals there have been out on site and have completed the delineation. And then, the surveying company that I work directly with, White House Land Survey, has been out there locating the flags. Uh, so next week, I anticipate that they'll be completing the location of the flags and we'll be, we'll have all those new flags on the planet. When we met last, we discussed that this would need to go to third-party review. I believe we discussed an amount to fund the 53G account, which has been funded. Very good. And that has been funded, so there's an account, but there was no, um, person to actually send the information to. So I believe the last meeting, we asked to have a couple, uh, third-party reviewers, some engineers and some wetlands professionals to be reached out to. And I took a look at the agenda, looked like a few of those people actually submitted some quotes. We were here tonight to, can I ask the board to select one of those people so that when we have our plan completed, we can send it off to them and they can take a look at it?
Yeah, and we also have a third consultant that wasn't on there. Um, we have Green Seal Environmental, um, who submitted their hourly rates. Um, Beta was the only one who gave, like, a fee to review the initial project. Um, everyone else just gave hourly rates. Um, Brandon Fanaf was under the impression he was reviewing the ANRAD, the delineation, but then we clarified it's not just a delineation, it would be the entire project. So I asked him who he'd be using for an engineer, and he said NITCH engineering. So he brought him in, in the email.
What was the engineering firm?
NITCH Engineering.
Spell that, Lisa.
N-I-T-S-H. So it's right on that paperwork there that I gave you. So we have three. We have NITCH Engineering, Green Seal Environmental and Beta, um, to choose from. So the commission can read through the emails with them that I passed out. And also Charlie put the information in the agenda. So I, when we consider this, I'd just like everybody to consider time as well and, um, the fact, you know, that a lot of these guys are really busy. I know Green Seal and Beta both said that they could get right on it. I don't know about Brandon Fanaf. And NITCH.
All right, and the other? We have other people who worked, who reviewed this project?
We have three. Three choices the commission needs to decide.
Who are the other two?
So it's Beta.
There's people.
Yeah, Beta, which is Marty Novar. And Beta sent the hourly rates and a fee. Do you want me to read it out?
Yeah, I'm finding this rather a bit confusing with all these, uh...
Well, the papers I...
Two. One was for, uh, uh, total amount of $5,500, which will be our payment.
All right, so Beta's scope of proposal of initial review of the project, including civil and stormwater and regulatory review, um, so... So, okay, in a memo from Marty Novar on June 16th, peer review notice of intent, Hunter's Hill Drive subdivision. Um, Mr. Meller and commission members, Beta Group is prepared to review the notice of intent for Hunter's Hill Drive subdivision located at Hunter's Hill Drive in Dayton. Based on our cursory review, we anticipate the following tasks to be necessary to complete our review of the project. Technical review of the initial submitted and publicly available materials. Review of stormwater checklist and drainage report for compliance with mass stormwater regs under the Wetlands Protection Act by a mass PE. Site inspection to document existing conditions. We recommend that the limit of work be staked prior to site visits. Preparation of written comments and recommendations on the initially submitted materials for public hearing and attendance at one conservation commission meeting. Beta's staff's hourly rates to participate are anticipated to require the fulfill of, to fulfill the above scope of services are the following. Mass professional engineer, $190. Staff civil engineer, $120. Senior scientist, $190. Project scientist, $140, and staff biologist, $90. We'd be happy to provide an estimated number of hours at your request. All right. And then the next, um, the next memo she had sent was, she believes that to conduct this, it would cost $5,500. Um, I, we already have $5,000, correct? So, and then Stuart Clark, um, emailed me back and said, thanks for the opportunity. Our billing rate for peer review is $150 per hour. Typically, we prepare an estimate of time based on submitted materials. I have attached two resumes for your use. All reviews will be by a PE. Both Laura and myself have a solid understanding of conservation issues and stormwater. Please let me know if you require any additional information. Signed by Stuart Clark, PE. And he sent the, um...
Who was that from?
Stuart Clark of Green Seal Environmental.
Stuart Clark?
Yeah. Stuart Clark, Green Seal Environmental. So he sent off the resumes. They did not give us an estimate. Um, Brandon Fanaf responded. You guys got that on your agenda, I believe. As requested, I'm interested in reviewing the...
Yeah, that was, that was 5K, but two, that's to start with, it says.
Right. Yeah, they, they didn't really review it like Marty had reviewed it and said, this is what it's gonna...
All of those estimates are to start with.
Yeah. But Marty Nova Beta is, um, seems to be more, seems to be firm and I guess...
I can't hear you, Jim.
She made it firm, but...
Nova or Beta are $110 bucks an hour.
Who? Fanaf.
Yeah.
Well, and NITCH, he has a NITCH as well, would be $130 an hour. And, and they're just kind of throwing it out there that they're not really sure. I sent them all the material, I sent them all the same materials. So I, I sent them exactly where Evan's, the link. So they each had that to be able to submit this proposal.
Did the link still work and it'll be, uh...
As far as I know, nobody told me they didn't unless they didn't open it.
Yeah.
Of the three estimates, it looks like Brandon's is the cheapest.
He's the cheapest. He, he has reviewed the wet, that, he flagged the wetlands previously. However, he'd be take, bringing in a new engineer, another, because he's not an engineer. So he'd be bringing in an engineer to review the stormwater. Brandon wasn't really responsive to me at first. He didn't even call me back, so, you know, I don't know how long it would take him to do it. But Marty seemed to be the one with the most thorough, in my opinion, review of this so far. But she's not the cheapest.
I don't see any reason why we have to subject the applicant to pay more than he has to.
We've worked with NITCH before.
I mean, his appearance before us have always been, uh...
Okay, I'm not, I'm not saying anything negative.
Oh, all right. I like Brandon, I'm just, I'm not fond of his engineer.
I've worked with NITCH Engineering before. They do the review for the town of Rainham. And then Steve Van Truska, who is the project manager for the reviews, he used to be the chairman of the Middle Borough Conservation Commission. So they've, they've done pretty good in the past. I've had my projects reviewed with them before in Rainham. So I'm familiar with them and they are, they're thorough, I'll tell you.
Good luck.
You want to speak?
Yes, I just want to say that we're currently involved with a project in Plainville and Beta is one of the outside consultants. And if you assign this to Beta, I'm just gonna withdraw the application.
I, I, I...
If you, if you assign this to Beta, I'm just gonna withdraw the notice of intent. They're thieves, um, they're, they're overpriced, uh, they gouge, uh, they are slow and non-responsive. And again, if you assign it to them, I'm just gonna withdraw the application.
We haven't found them that, I haven't found them that way, but...
I've found them that way extensively.
Very good.
And they've cost me a fortune on that part, needless. Better knock it up and do it to me again.
Okay, the other, the other option is Green Seal Environmental, which I think it would be, um, a good idea for the commission to consider another consultant. Um, the DPW works with Green Seal. So just a thought, if we wanted to bring in another, I was trying to get Woodard and Curran on this. I thought that would be good, but they were flat out, they had way too much to do, so. Um, Green Seal Environmental's the other option. His email and their resumes are there.
I've, I've, I've always respected and had good luck with Brandon.
When I typed these up, I didn't realize that Green Seal had submitted anything. But the two that I typed up, it's pretty obvious that...
Can I finish? Can I finish?
Right.
I, I was speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
And you cut me off. I said, I always, uh...
I have them too.
Yeah.
They don't work very well either.
I've had good luck with Brandon, I respect him, he does a good job. I've been waiting three months for a return phone call from his engineer. That's all I know about his engineer.
Well, if they wanna deal with that and we could go with the less expensive, um, peer review and whatever time it takes, it takes.
I don't have a problem.
Okay, you're gonna make a motion, Charlie?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, submission of consultant for Hunter's Hill to Brandon Fanaf.
I'll second that.
Eco Systems, uh...
And, and NITCH, it's NITCH Engineering for the stormwater. NITCH would be a sub to him.
He's got an engineer that could handle that.
Yeah, NITCH.
NITCH.
That's, that's the guy I've been waiting for.
Yeah.
Well, I'll second that.
We don't want to consider Green Seal at all?
If they haven't done anything, uh, this is time for discussion.
Green Seal, Green Seal has worked with DPW, they're happy with their services.
I, I, I'd like to hear from these two guys.
It was like Green Seal, they didn't know, there's not a whole lot of information they submitted.
Yeah. The hourly rates.
Yeah. Maybe that's what I feel about that.
You guys, you've worked with NITCH and Brandon? I mean, is that satisfactory with you people?
Very confident, highly confident, very responsive. I don't believe you've been waiting three months to hear from NITCH Engineering.
I, I believe it, because Brandon Fanaf didn't even return my phone call.
I'm talking about NITCH Engineering. He said it's another engineering firm that he's working with on a different project that you wait to hear from. It's not NITCH Engineering.
Oh, it is.
You'd never wait three months to hear from them.
It, it is, trust me, it is. Because he's, he's working on a, um, broad...
Well, if, if Long Built Homes is satisfied with NITCH Engineering and, and Brandon, I make a motion that we hire him as a consultant for Hunter's Hill.
Well, we already have the motion and second it.
Well, I mean, yeah, okay.
Jim?
Bill, call each person to vote.
Yeah.
Call for a vote, Bill.
I will. Jack?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't vote.
No, I know you don't vote, I'm waving at you.
Okay, so it's Brandon Fanaf that will, and NITCH.
Um, is there anyone on the Zoom or in the audience that had any discussion about any of the thing at Hunter's Hill?
Well, that was just the, that was not the project itself.
Right, but...
That's just the peer review.
You still might have someone.
Just a quick question, so now that we have the reviewer selected, I expect that the, uh, plan is gonna be completed in probably, not next week, but the following week. What I'd like to do is have the ability to take the plan and forward that information over to the consultant so they can get going on it. Um, or I could forward it to your staff, to Lisa, and she could send it on over instead of waiting for the next meeting to, to submit the plan.
Yes, that would work.
Okay, great. So when we get the plan cleared from White House, I'll sure go to your office PDF.
That's great, yeah, go, go through us for that, yeah.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, versus, I don't know if you want me to come to a meeting, that's all I'm supposed to do.
Um, no, I mean, you, well, to present the information.
We'll present it, for sure, yeah, when it comes in.
July 15.
Yep. We can do that.
Okay.
No, let's, let's see, we can get that moving soon. Yeah, let's not wait till we... We can, we can expect it. Right.
I just got a, a question unrelated to us here, though. Are you people all set with water for your project?
Yes. We, we have a will serve letter from the water department. Um, we, that was in our, um, due diligence period, you know, going through the various stages of due diligence. Um, you know, we were clearly made aware of the fact that there was a water shortage issue in the town. We reached out to the water department and...
Okay, no, that, that's...
I'm not really sure how or why, but they had, certain projects had been approved that they had reserved water for. And this was one of them, and they maintained that reservation, so they confirmed it.
I'm just throwing something out.
I appreciate that, yes, no.
To be helpful.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but no, yeah, we, we did confirm that. We did in fact get the will serve letter. Thank you.
And Evan, I'd like to also participate in the site visits and things, so if, you know, just, where Brandon wasn't responsive to me, maybe he'll be responsive to you. Maybe he just missed my call or didn't get my voicemail, but if you could just tell him, I'd like to tag along on the site visit.
Yeah, so I expect that there would be, um, to give you the plan, you can give it to Brandon. We see him enough through, you know, other things, so I'll, I'll...
Thank you. I know everyone's busy. Appreciate it.
Okay, is that it for tonight on Hunter's Hill?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Brady, thank you.
You too.
Do you know if I have that? Do I still have that?
Oh, of course. Thank you.
The rest of the agenda I'm looking for. Oh, no, I know where we are, Jim. I guess this is number five. We got to we got to approve Strawberry Fields consultant fee in the amount of $547.50 to the Beta Group.
I made the motion that we approve payment for $547.50 to Beta from Strawberry Fields 53G account.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, invoice number six. I move that we pay Beta $3,970 to, from the Strawberry Fields account for services from 2/27 to 4/2. Both of this year.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Now, as an aside, I received a copy of email from Bishop, or between Bishop and Marty. And he has agreed to pay outstanding invoices. You recall, we've had a problem with their, our ability to pay bills because they refuse to pay.
Who is this?
Bishop, Bishop Hesha, Strawberry Field.
Okay, we got one more from invoice number four.
And while we're at it, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I received an email today. And I, I received a call as well from Jacob Striskel saying that they have revised plans. They dropped them off at my office today, so I have them here. They also sent them to Marty. So if you guys want copies before you go to do on your downtime, look at it on your downtime, I mean. Or good fire pit, fire pit, fire, right?
Okay, before we get too sidetracked, invoice number four, I make the motion that Beta is paid $910 from the, from Strawberry Fields.
No, that's not Strawberry Fields. That was a 40B project that we, where we agreed to join the protest. And it was aborted by the selectmen. They wouldn't allow us to appeal the zoning board of appeals decision to prove, to approve Strawberry Fields.
Okay, so, so who owes the $910?
We owe the $910 to.
Jim, we can't hear.
Provide, provided information to town attorney.
Okay, so this money goes to the town attorney then, from our account?
No, Marty.
This goes to Beta. This is a bill from Beta, not from the attorney.
Okay.
So where is the money coming from?
Provided to the attorney.
Why don't you make that motion then?
Well, wait a minute, where is the money coming from? Because I also have two Dave, I have two gay and gay bills.
Gay?
Yeah, attorney gay bills.
Pay that too.
Well, yes, I can sign to pay bills now. Bill gave me the.
We don't have to vote to pay the bills? I'm pretty sure we have to vote to pay the bills.
But you can sign.
Okay, well, we'll do it at the next meeting. I'll bring them.
Okay.
However, the town accountant has a copy. And because we ran out of money, the fiscal year is almost over, we ran out of money. So they were going to borrow some money from another board to pay them.
Borrow it from where?
Another board that had money in their account.
Well, we have an account that should be able to pay this. Our wetland protection fund account allows payments to, for consultants.
That's the $910, but not the lawyer. We can't pay lawyers out of it.
You can't?
No. We can pay, we can pay Beta, but not gay out of that account.
That's strange.
Really? I'll look into that.
I don't know where I read that, but that's, you can look into it.
Yeah, but I mean.
Why don't you put the bills on the next agenda?
Sure.
Then include this one here too?
Find a payment method.
Yep.
Okay.
No problem.
So that includes the $910 will be, will be on next week's agenda.
No, stay on this one. It's right here. We do have a bill from them.
Oh, okay, all right. So we can, we can pay that then?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you make the motion since you.
I make a motion that we pay Beta $910 for work they've done with town accountant and pay it out of our wetlands protection fund account.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you guys vote?
I did. Did you, you gotta vote.
Yeah, go, this, aye. Aye, aye, aye. I made the motion. Why would I have to vote? Now we get into the meat of the meeting.
We're going to do a commission update discussion section. Discuss the Conservation Commission adoption of remote participation policy of meetings.
Do we want to do that?
For 978 Hart Street enforcement order expired, so forth, so on.
Do we want?
I asked you to put me on the agenda. I'm not on the agenda?
Sorry, Bill. I didn't put you on the agenda. Can you wait to the 24th?
Huh?
Can you wait to the?
No. I've been waiting for, Charlie, I've been waiting five years.
Well, when we get to the, that part of the, you can speak right up.
Good.
Okay, um, do we want to adopt, basically put that in there about adopting a policy for remote participation? Because, um, and I don't know what came, does anyone know what came of the legislation that was supposed to pass, be passed? Maybe Laura knows.
State, they signed legislation that, you know, still on virtual meetings and stuff.
That towns can still participate in virtual. So, yeah, we could do that so that if there ever comes a time and we need to allow some of the voting members to participate remotely, we can do that.
I believe that they passed legislation allowing that.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's what, that's what he just said.
Yesterday, day before or something.
Yeah, Tuesday.
You could participate from home.
Great, I don't have an hour drive. So if, but anyways, I could always participate from home. It's the voting members that wouldn't have been allowed to unless we adopt this policy that allows us to. So each board and commission was asked by the town administrator to adopt this policy to allow for remote participation. If needed. However, I, I fully expect going forward, like the next meeting on the 24th, we're not going to have the Zoom. We don't, we don't need to. I mean, it's only if we need to.
Okay, well, I, I, I'm really uncomfortable with Zoom meetings. I, I miss half of it. I'm reluctant, I'm reluctant to comment because I, you know, I, I miss half of what, what people are saying.
All right, so let's.
But that's just me.
Let's nix it and then we just all have to show up, you know, everybody has to show up to the meeting instead.
That's fine.
No slippers and coffee. Well, you can have coffee. I'll cross that off. Bill, for the next item.
I can't hear.
For the next item, you have to recuse yourself.
I do.
Okay.
Okay, we're going, we want an update then on 578 Hart Street, the enforcement order?
Sure, Paul Duarte is in the, on the Zoom call. So if he would like to speak about, give us an update on where things are at with that. Bill, do you want to come down here? So you can speak.
I'm fine right here.
Okay. Can you let, is, can you let Paul speak or is Laura, is that a?
He just asked for a meeting, so.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. As far as an update, we, like, we've been continuing with the project, just doing grading. I've been maintaining the silt fence. I don't really know much more I can say than I can say in a previous meeting other than, which has been working on it and maintaining it.
Well, Paul.
Yep.
You told me I could expect for the May meeting and RDA, but I haven't seen anything.
I, RDA, I actually put that in already for the town. And I believe it was in, not believe, I know it was in Taunton. I went to drop it off in last week, uh, the week before, I'm sorry.
Taunton, what do you mean, Taunton?
The paperwork, I'm sorry, the, no, yes, the Taunton paper, paperwork, the, like I did the first time.
It has to come to us.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so the, the as-built and all the paperwork has to come to us.
I got, I got the paperwork, but I do not have the as-built because I mentioned in the last meeting, the as-built, I have to be, I'm going to complete them once I have the grading done, finished.
Okay.
I thought I was, I was getting an impression that the as-built were only for, or required for the board of health, not conservation.
Uh, yeah, conservation, to be able to close out your orders of conditions is going to need an as-built.
Okay.
That's why I was asking you to do that and to file an RDA.
Yeah, he did say he was waiting to get all the grading done.
But, but don't I need to finish my, I need to finish my grading before I can do my as-built? Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, but what I wanted was an RDA for the remaining grading.
Okay.
And so we, we could see the existing conditions now. So it would be like a partial as-built. I mean, they should be all, already almost like, you're almost done, right?
Yes, yes. Okay. Uh, my apologies, I made that mistake and.
Do you know?
I needed to send that into the registry of deeds, like I did the first time when I pulled the permit for, for that.
So what did you bring to the registry of deeds? Do you know?
I dropped it off and.
What was it?
Huh?
What was it?
It was a paperwork I had gotten from the engineer from the original, when I first originally pulled a permit, I had to submit paperwork.
So you recorded your conditions?
Yes, I believe that's what it was. I have a copy of it. I can bring that in to you.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, I will, I will have it to you. I know you guys are closed tomorrow. I will make it a point to meet with you beginning of the week and give you that copy.
Beginning of the week, super busy. If I'm not there, you can leave it with Carrie in the planning board office. I'm sharing office with her now.
Okay, all right. I will definitely do that beginning of the week and have that for you.
Great, that's good. Does anyone in the audience, Jim, are you, are you running the meeting now?
Is, if this.
Accused.
But this is still, we're still on Hart Street? Yes, I am. So, okay, so, um, if he's going to be delivering this material, the paperwork to you, then, and he's working on it, what else do we have to do until he's finished?
Well, I want him to continue to monitor the site during large rain events greater than like a quarter, when we know it's going to be, you know, greater than like a quarter of an inch of rain and take photos. He's been doing that and he's been emailing me the photos.
Paul, how was it at that thunderstorm the other night?
It was actually, I believe it was a Saturday you're referring to?
Uh.
Thunderstorm?
I think, was it two, three nights ago?
Oh, no, I, I was not there that, at that night. There was one particular day, we actually had a heavy downpour and I was actually on site and went out, that was the day, Lisa, I sent you a the, the video and pictures of the site. And then I ended up sending you another video of the fernal pool. That was the night that I, while it was raining and downpouring, I went and did that. That particular night you're referring to, I was not there.
Yeah, it was around eight o'clock.
Yeah, I, I wasn't there at that point.
Jim? Okay, you have a.
There was no rain on Hart Street.
No rain on Hart Street. Wow.
But there wa, there was rain on one, one particular weekend, a day on a Saturday. I can go back and look at the emails, but that was the one time I was there and we had a, a downpour. It didn't last long, but we did have a downpour and that was the day that I actually, again, was on site and videotaped everything and took pictures and sent them to Lisa.
Yeah, I appreciate you sending that, the video too.
No problem.
Are there any questions for anyone? Okay, Lisa, would that conclude what we have to deal with for Hart Street?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to just, I'd like to see that recorded paperwork next week and I.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul, so you're going to bring that, that paperwork in and have it in Lisa's office Monday or Tuesday?
Yes, I will, Lisa, I will contact you and.
Okay.
And let you know, but beginning of the week, Monday and Tuesday, I will have that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay.
Was there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is it my turn?
You may speak now.
Okay. I'm so glad to see that Mr. Duarte is taking care of things now. I wish he had done it five years ago. But I, from, from this point on, it doesn't make much difference to me what happens there. But what I'm concerned about is what has already happened. I would like my wetlands to be treated just like everybody else's wetlands. When someone fills the wetlands, you issue them an order of conditions or an enforcement order and you have them restore it. I, I would like to have the same thing happen with, with my wetlands. Similar to what you did with the reeds. You know, he filled in a wetland and you made him restore it. Mr. Duarte filled in my wetlands and you ought to make him restore it.
Okay, Bill, I, I understand what you're saying.
Good.
Now, in the case of reeds and others, they have filled in their own land and they were able, and we were able to say, clean up your land.
Oh, I understand now.
Now we have a problem. Can we tell him to clean up your land? And was all of that silt that went in there coming from his property? I'm saying all of it, or 90% or 80%?
You, you.
I, I, wait a minute, I, I don't know. I'm playing devil's advocate here. I, we can't, we cannot order him to go onto your property and take out 80%.
I wouldn't have him on my property at all.
No, but, or, or his engineer.
What you're telling me is if you, if you fill in your own wetlands, you can issue an order of conditions or, or.
Enforcement.
An order to me, but if he, if you, if you infiltrate someone else's property and fill someone else's wetlands, you can't? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know.
What do you mean, you don't know? You're on the Conservation Commission for 40 years.
Well, you don't know either.
Yes, I do.
Okay, what I.
I read the act and that says you don't, you don't fill any wetlands at all with any kind of material. Now, you've all seen, everybody has seen, and all my neighbors have seen.
I have seen silt going down.
Coming from his property onto my property.
I have seen it coming from other properties as well, Bill.
Slow down.
Go ahead.
You, I have, on, with my own dollar, I have hired a wildlife, uh, scientist to monitor my wetlands for a period of one year, and you, I'm sure you still have the-
I, I've seen the pictures and I've seen-
No, no, you've seen the report from LLC? Now, that's only one year, and you know he's been doing it for five years.
Go ahead.
Well, what do you do when someone fills in a wetland?
When somebody alters a wetland, they do it physically, you're talking about a whole different operation. It rains, it runs, it runs downhill, it ends up in your ponds.
Yes.
I don't know what we can do. I really don't know. This, it, I, I'm, I'm puzzled as to what can be done, I know what you're saying, I've seen the silt flowing down, but as I said, is, what flowed down ninety percent his, eighty percent, seventy percent?
Did, did you look at what, did you look what LLC sent you?
I did.
And, and what do you think about that?
I wasn't impressed with the report.
Well, I wish you had been, because I had to pay for it.
I wasn't impressed with it, I'm not sure if I still got it here now.
Well, I hope you do, it's evidence.
Have you asked Brandon if there are any solutions? I mean, he prepared a report, he's a wetland consultant, he should, uh, at least be able to give you some idea of what we can legally do.
He did.
Okay, you guys gonna chime in, or, uh?
Yeah, I'd like to get Jim and Jack's opinion, uh-
There's an issue up there, but there's been a combination for a long time, everybody's contributed to that.
Who's everybody?
All those lots.
No, just, uh-
Now, the rest of them, Bill, they've all contributed to filling the vernal pool.
That's why, that, that's why, that's why I've had it, uh, that's why I had Brandon Fanoff monitor it for a year. The only silt that came down, the only silt-
Monitored for four, five, or six years before this, and I mean, this has been an ongoing thing that started with the first house.
The only, uh-
And I mean, I'm not, you know, sticking up for anybody, but, you know-
Only other contributor to the silt in my, on my wetland.
We don't know if it's ninety percent.
From the next-door neighbor, Kamara, that's the only one, that, everybody else, we worked diligently to stop it, and we did. We stopped it from lots, uh, six and five, and from one and two and three, the only ones we didn't, weren't able to stop, or you people weren't able to stop, was Kamara and Duarte, they, that would be, were the only people that you never got, able to stop. You issued, you issued them enforcement order after enforcement order, the only thing you didn't do was follow up. The last enforcement order you issued him, he ripped it up, threw it on the ground, and continued to doing anything he wanted to do the way he did it, and you still never followed up. Now, he's got, uh-
Don't look at me, I wasn't here.
I don't know what to say.
Well, he filled in my wetlands.
Continual problem, true, he has made efforts to prevent silt from running from his property, it's not like he just spit in our face.
How about the last five years, Charlie?
The guy's been delivering a house for five years, he didn't want to borrow money from a bank, I mean, that's not my problem.
No.
That's his problem, but I really don't know, you can always sue him.
You must have fifty photographs on your phone, photographs that I sent you, showing you the silt running off his property onto my property, and, uh, onto my wetlands, now, a conservation commission-
Every house that was built along that street deposited silt in your pond.
No.
Yes.
That's wrong, that is absolutely wrong.
Kamara's didn't?
Kamara did, and he's the only one.
I guess what Charlie's getting at is how does he, how do, how do, the commission's not sure how we could find Duarte accountable for something that has been going on with that road.
That's why I had Brandon monitor it for a whole year, no one else contributed any silt into that pond, including the highway department that I checked with, for that whole period of a year, from November nineteen ninety-nine to November of two thousand and two thousand.
Okay, I, I'm gonna throw out something.
You mean, two thousand, you mean, two thousand nineteen to two thousand, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty?
November, yes.
Okay, 'cause otherwise we're way back in time, ninety-nine to two thousand was, before I was here the last time.
All right, all right, but anyway, uh, I had him monitor it for a whole year, no one else contributed any silt in there except him, and Brandon monitored it and measured it, and you've got the results that I paid for, because you guys couldn't stop him.
We tried to get him, we, we insisted that he change erosion controls constantly, it was an ongoing problem.
Yes.
He would try to, he stopped some, and, and it would start up in another spot.
Yeah, you would tell him how to do it, and then you would leave, and he wouldn't do it.
We didn't do nothing, we did a lot of, of complaining, and he did react to, to our complaints, he, he tried to stop the siltation.
Last April, we had a rainstorm, this, two months ago, seven weeks actually, where you, it silted up my pond, my wetlands, and it's also silted up the vernal pool, and I sent you a photograph of it, and you said, "Aren't you happy, Bill, that it's not as bad as it was last time?" And I said, "Absolutely not, I don't want any silt from his property coming onto my property."
Get back to the vernal pool, you said it's dead, he submitted a, a video, not a video, an audio, of peepers peeping away in there.
I'm talking about my wetlands.
You also talked about the vernal pool, the last meeting, you said he killed the vernal pool.
He did.
He didn't.
Did everybody, I, I forwarded-
I'm so happy that it came back, I would like my wetlands to come back.
I don't think it ever died.
Excuse me, guys, did everyone get a copy of that audio file I sent?
Yes.
Okay. Were you able to open it?
The what?
The audio, I sent them an audio file, and then, since then, you've asked me if there was any information, and I sent you an audio fi- the audio file that Paul sent us, of the peepers, and the wood frogs.
He was videotaping the vernal pool on Hart Street?
Pardon?
Are we sure he was videotaping the vernal pool on Hart Street?
It was an audio.
Can I respond to that, to prove that?
Go ahead, Paul.
If you look at that video and listen to that audio, I, because I know how Bill is, I actually videotaped the telephone pole that has an ID number on it, so if you would like, Bill, you yourself can go look at that ID number on the telephone and match the video to prove my point.
That's enough, now, I, I don't need to discuss the vernal pool anymore.
Not, no more, because you're wrong, right, got it.
What I need to discuss is my wetland, I don't know what would you do if I-
Okay, Bill, I'm gonna suggest something, I don't know if you're gonna like it or not, but you said that Brandon monitored your pond for a year.
My wetland.
And, uh, you, uh, said that he had suggestions for you, I don't know if the suggestions were civil suit, I have no idea what they were.
How can a wetland violation be a civil suit?
Well, you're saying you did damage to it.
You wouldn't believe how many comments I got on the phone from, from that, that statement that you just-
No, wait, don't interrupt me now.
Go ahead, Jim, keep it going.
You said, you said that, uh, that he had, um, monitored it, that he had suggestions for you on what to do, I don't know if a civil suit would be the way to go, it might be, but why don't you take Brandon's suggestions, let him build a case, uh, if you've got all that paperwork that you've already paid for, pictures and depths of silt, and you can prove that, or Brandon can prove that all that silt came from Paul's property, then you can have it probably dredged, and through a silt, through a, through, uh, legal action, have Paul pay for it. I, I mean, I cannot, I cannot tell Paul to go and, and start cleaning up your property, because it is your property, I, I, I understand that you are aggrieved.
And you, and, and you know why I'm saying that, uh, it's okay to, to, to silt up your neighbor's property?
I understand what you're saying, and I don't have a solution for it.
Well, I'll tell you-
Every time I went there, uh, yes, he was getting hot under the car at times, because he was as frustrated as we were, he did everything that we said, put hay bales here, put hay bales there, put some kind of a, of a fence, he did it and it didn't work.
It wasn't your job to tell him how to fix it, the last order of conditions or the last enforcement order you issued, you told him to hire an engineer, he ripped it up, threw it on the ground, and you walked away and never went back, and he just let him-
Didn't walk away, we continued to talk with him.
Yeah, you continued to talk to him, but you never followed up on the ripped-up order of enforcement order.
He did what we asked him to do that day, we told him what he needed to-
That's wrong, Charlie.
Well, it may be, but-
You, you don't tell him, the engineer tells him what to do, that's where you make your mistake.
I don't know what power we have to do what you want us to do, I really don't.
Same thing you did with Reed, what's the difference?
Reed dumped piles of dirt there, it didn't run down a road, run down a road and into your pond.
That was on his own site.
Paul didn't put that stuff in there.
Yes, he did.
Indirectly.
Exactly.
But that's a, the wetland deals with alterations, physical alterations.
Well, don't you think the silt in my pond is a physical alteration?
I don't know what to tell you, I know it's not as clean as it, but when it settles down, your pond is as clean as it ever was, it's just not as deep as it ever was.
Yeah, so I should, so I should have to dredge it out and, and-
I don't know what to tell you, I'm not a lawyer.
You don't have to be a lawyer, all you have to do is read, read, uh, chapter one forty.
We need some kind of legal advice to, to try to solve your problem, I don't know how to solve it. All I know is that water runs downhill, and it keeps on running downhill, he didn't make it run downhill, he was negligent in some areas, but he never did it on purpose, it wasn't, I'm, you're a liar.
I, I, I have something-
He made changes that we requested and required, and he did try to stop the problem, so he didn't do it intentionally, that's my, my point.
It's not like, how do we, I don't- To do, to, to fill up my wetlands because he didn't do it on purpose.
All I know is that it's a very serious problem for you, and for us too, but I don't have an answer.
Lisa, I'd like a comment from you.
In, in my opinion, things are drastically changing on the site, he's planted grass, he's stabilizing the site, okay.
I appreciate that, more than you know.
I do too, and I, I, I appreciate, you know, the fact that he's been coming to every single meeting, to issue an enforcement order to him right now, to have him stop work, when he's just got some small grading around his septic system done, the site is stabilized.
I, I'm not, I don't ca- I want the site stabilized, I would love it, I'm, all I want to discuss, yeah.
It's not that we haven't tried to get it stabilized, it's not that he didn't try, Bill, he has tried, and he hasn't done it intentionally, there's my point.
So it's okay if you do it by accident?
I don't know.
It's not okay if you do it by accident, if you read them-
That's your option, but I don't know what options we have.
Well, I think you ought to know.
You think I ought to know?
I do.
You've been telling me, and I don't buy it. Well, you've been on the commission fifty years, you tell, you tell me exactly what the law says, and, and then-
It says no filling of any kind in, in a wetland.
He didn't fill it.
He did too.
No, he didn't.
What the hell's wrong with you?
It was erosion.
Mother Nature filled it.
It was erosion.
No, Charlie, no, Charlie.
He didn't get a bucket loader and scoop it and put it in your pond.
This is a waste of time.
You know, uh, I, I would like very, very much, I mean, hell, I've known you for over forty years, and, and I would, and, and I'd like this to be so over that you can't imagine, but, but that was not an intentional act, it was maybe negligence, but you can sue on his negligence.
I'm not gonna sue him for, I'm not gonna get a lawyer and sue anybody, when you have all the law in front of you, and you're the only one that can stop it.
What, what are you looking for? Tell, he's right here, tell him what you're looking for, and see what he has to say.
Yeah, tell him, yeah, tell him what, tell him what you want, you want him to go and dredge your pond?
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't want him on my property, but he should hire somebody to take out at least, like your, your report says, at least sixteen cubic feet, sixteen hundred cubic feet of silt, and that's a bargain, because that's only a one-year monitoring plan, where he's been doing it for over five years, and you know that, and you've seen him do it, and you, and you-
Does your pond dry up?
Please?
Does it dry up?
It, it gets low, it gets very low, it gets a lot lower now than it used to.
Jim?
All the years that Johnny Roger, all the years that Johnny Roger planted that farm, all the years that there was corn there, you know as well as I do, you mean to tell me when that was plowed and disced, there was never any runoff?
I don't know.
You were there.
No, I, my pond wasn't, when Johnny was pulling corn there, my pond wasn't there.
But there was never any dirt running down the street, I find that hard to believe, when you, when you turn that over and plow it, I've found my whole life, and I know what's gonna happen, you've got land that's loose, you know, Bill, I find it hard to believe that that's just started now, with all those years when Johnny was planting that corn, for God knows how long.
Well, Johnny was planting that corn long before my pond was there.
But I'm saying, you're saying there was never any runoff until this started, and I find it hard to believe that there was never any runoff on that street.
That's not what I said.
End the conversation, I'm not getting any-
I had Brandon monitor that pond.
I understand that.
For one year.
I understand that, but you also said there was never a problem until that was disturbed, and I find it hard to believe, all the years that that was planted, that it was never disturbed though, I know better than that.
Well, it, well, it had to, and, and after, before Johnny, it was Miguel-
But it's not okay now, you know, and like Charlie said, water runs downhill.
Yeah.
Okay, we are going to move on, I am gonna close-
I agree with Jim that-
I'm gonna close this issue as of now, yes, I am closing, I am chairman now.
Fishing, I'm finishing, and I'm, I'm allowed to finish, and you've been hardworking.
Well, you have been, you have been going on and on and saying the same thing, and we gave you ideas to see Brandon, to come up with excuses from Brandon.
Just sit back and let me tell you what Brandon told me.
Well, you wouldn't tell me before.
Well, I'm gonna tell you right now.
You have one minute.
He said, "This is not your fault, it's his fault, make him take it out," that's what Brandon suggested.
Can, can I respond to all this real quickly, just so I have my turn, and I say, please?
One minute.
Thank you, all I can say, this is such an important thing to, to Bill, why is it that, there's no issue with him, that, of the pile of feces that he has on his property, that's within seventy-five feet of the wetland that he's concerned about? It's been, and for the last six years that I've owned that property, it's been growing, it continues to grow, and he bring, doesn't bring that up. None of this is anybody else's, uh, his fault, it's everybody else's fault, if he has an issue with silt from wherever it come from, how does he not have an issue with this, it's not only an environmental issue, it's also a health issue, if he's so concerned about silt, he should, he's a board member, he should show some good, um, uh, examples by cleaning up his property, and not accusing other people of causing damage to his property like he's done to my other, to the other neighbors when they built it. And as far as the town, he said that they have the highway department, when there was no silt runoff from the ditch, that is incorrect. The town never installed any type of, um, erosion control at all, not one ounce of erosion control that they put down there. You know who did, I put a couple of bales of hay, I did, in front of my property, but the whole ditch was dug out, so if he has an issue with that, uh, if he doesn't have an issue with that, he shouldn't have an issue with anything else, but again, Bill doesn't get his way, he likes to accuse everybody, uh, everybody, but his issues, his problem, he's looking is to get money, because the last meeting, he was trying to blame me, the meeting before that, he was blaming the town, he's just looking to get money like he tried to do with the other neighbors when he went after them in court.
Okay, thank you, thank you, and we are going to, uh, for this evening, we will continue, anything else until, till the future. We are now going on- We are now going on to the update on Horton Street, a request for amended order of conditions.
Jim.
No, we are finished with that for tonight.
I need to answer his question.
No, you don't.
Okay.
Hey Paul, can you hear me?
Paul, do not respond if you're there.
So Horton Street, to be frank, Horton Street is actually not on the agenda anymore for tonight because DEP, after the site visit that Jim, Bill and I.
Jimmy was right.
Um, attended. DEP came back and gave them a deficiency letter. So there's a deficiency as far as their plan for the water quality certificate. Um, so DEP asked for some specific things, including alter, um, alternatives analysis. And until that all gets resolved with DEP chapter 91 license, whether they need that or not, and the water quality certificate, once that gets resolved, they'll come back before us. But I think you guys remembered that the last meeting, we, they were going back and forth with us, TLC and Green Seal.
If I remember correctly, we were supposed to submit amended order and we were supposed to have a meeting on June the 10th. And we never heard from them again.
Well, because we had the site visit with DEP and DEP agreed that we should not, and I was in, I had a copy of DEP's comment letter at that time at our meeting and I had sent it out to all the commissioners. And I knew for a fact DEP was not going to approve that cover as he's proposing. So instead of amending and amending again, I said, why don't we just wait until DEP is done reviewing this? Make sure that it, it meets all the storm, um, stream crossing standards and water quality standards. And then whatever they come up with, we will review that final and be done, you know, amend the conditions.
I wondered what we never heard from them.
That's why, that's the update.
Okay, um, Main Street, okay, do we have to have any motion or anything, or we're just gonna get an amended order from them?
So they're here and they're, so 1361 Main Street, request for certificate of compliance. It actually, it's referencing Tony Roderick's order of conditions. Um, the Only Jones had requested that through Proline. I have a letter and I have plans here for you guys to look at. You guys wanna share that?
Sure.
This is the house.
Yeah.
It's the, the house, it's the end of the main street. Finally, after the last meeting we had.
Well, first house that totally faces.
So he had requested a certificate of compliance.
Yeah, they did. That's what that is, right?
Yeah, that's where the issue was with the shed. This stuff had to be moved in this raised garden.
It was the corner. Touchdown was just a mile or two.
Yeah. That's really.
That's a good solution and a good ending to both.
However, we, and so right before that came in, the new owners contacted me and they are here. The new owners are here as well.
Well, you've got to hear some fireworks tonight, in-house.
No TV in, well, there is a TV in. Free entertainment.
Virtual fireworks for this too. But it's, it's funny, he said, he supplied, now we have to issue a vote on it, issuing an order.
Right, but the new owners have some.
We did vote on it last week.
You did, is it in the minutes that you did?
Yes.
Okay, because the new owners are here and they, they, you go ahead.
With time, with civil.
After all that, I don't know, I'm a little nervous. So we bought this property, um, and I, that was the report that.
Second or third owner?
We are the, are we the third owner?
Third.
Yeah, Roderick was the first.
I'm Richard Only Jones.
Yes, we bought from him, we're meeting him for the first time tonight.
I'm, I'm, we were, I'm one of two that purchased off Tony Roderick.
Okay.
Um, the one thing I wanted to do before we get into this, I just wanted to apologize to the board. Um, we had, I'd seen a lot of the videos, I reached out to Lisa, I'm, we're new to town. I didn't know how things were handled when it came to town politics. Um, our lawyer had actually told us that your meetings were canceled because of COVID. Um, I know one of the meetings, somebody had mentioned, you know, where the new owners, if they have questions, you know, they're not here and I wanted to apologize. Um, I, I didn't know you guys were still having meetings. Um, so I just wanted to start out by apologizing.
We're catching up now.
It's an issue I'm dealing with with my lawyer, you know, I should have reached out to Lisa in the beginning when we moved into town. Um, I went off of my lawyer just saying, the meetings are canceled, I'll let you know. Um, so that was my mistake and I just wanted to apologize to the board.
Apology can get accepted.
Um, so, go ahead.
Well, that, that the paper that said that they wanted the rock wall to be the end of.
We're excellent.
Yes. So the main meeting, the discussion was that the rock wall that's currently in place would be the wall for the conservation line. I had seen the papers that you have in front of you and the plan that you have in front of me. Um, the only concerns, you know, we understand that it's wetland, um, we're excited to be in a small town. Um, I'm pumped at the fact that people can't go behind us. So, um, it, it's fine, we love small towns, that's why we moved to Dayton. You know, my wife's first apartment was in Dayton, we both come from small towns.
They still live with the Simmons on Center Street, I lived above their house.
We are excited for it, um, the only thing that we were requesting, um, what you guys had discussed at the main meeting, and I, I agree 100% that the rock wall prevents the best barrier for the wetlands. Um, I just wanted to know before if we can, before it's ruled on or agreed on, is there any way that we can work with the board and Lisa to maybe reconstruct that wall? First off, because it just seems like it was thrown together by the builder and maybe move it out a little closer to that 50-foot line? Just so we have a little bit more room for our kids. I'm not asking for, you know, the entire property, I'm willing to work with Lisa, I've touched base with her, she had expressed some concerns with the board from earlier, um, with that property. I'm willing to work with her, I'm willing to work with the board and try to make it, you know, a little bit better and fix some things that had been put there. Uh, my only request is possibly because, well, now that we have the engineering report, would it be agreeable with the board to build a better rock wall that looks a lot more presentable, but just let us go a little closer to that 50-foot line instead of having that rock wall that's there? Um, the wall, rock wall that's there, I do have pictures, um, if you guys would like to see. Um, in the main meeting, it said that that might have been an original rock wall, it, it doesn't look like there's new rocks in there, I think from when they built and excavated. They must have just thrown the rocks there. There's a lot of stuff growing through, uh, there are trees that had fallen through the storms. Now there's just overgrowth back there and I just, I don't want that line to be done because I want to be able to.
Pass the pictures around?
Yeah, I have them on my iPad if that's okay.
Oh, okay. Um, so where, where we're at is that there was a wetland alteration on the site, right? So.
Is the wall, the wall is the wetland line, isn't it, or just?
No, the, the wall is the wetland line on the western end of the property, okay? And, but if you look at the plan, the wetlands go off to the southeast. So I'd be amenable to that idea, however, I would like to see some sort of a planting, if you, that's what I wanted in the beginning. Some su, I actually wanted that fill removed. We might all have a win-win here after we leave tonight.
This is the one that they built in.
We might all have a win-win after we leave tonight.
Am I gonna say this is the unique wall?
Yes.
That's a, that's a good-looking wall.
Excuse me?
That was the wetland.
To move the wall somewhere.
The wetlands. The street, here's the Main Street, okay, here's, here's.
That's the north-south.
Wait a minute, Main Street. So we were, was, was.
This is the last house we must prepare.
The second stay, the fill can stay.
That's the last house on Main Street, this is the corner.
And they didn't need to be any planting, however, I would like to see.
Oh, okay, I'm thinking about that one, is this one? Okay.
We're looking for natural area. You know what I mean? So if we can give. Right, so it could be something where I could come out and we could look at it in person together and kind of figure out based on Bob Barrowby's stakes of the 25-foot no-touch and the 50-foot no-build.
He doesn't want to do anything in here, he wants to move the wall.
That's because it was cut.
Right, well, he.
But, but like, you know, you have a 25-foot that you can't clean up. Just clean up to me and clean up to you, it's two different things.
Sorry, sorry.
So what you're planning to do is extending the usable portion of your property?
Basically, I just, I wanna, I mean, this, obviously, this is the no-touch, which is, I 100% understand. We didn't know this when we bought it, not that it would have made a difference.
What is all this right here?
That's that corner. Flower beds there.
Oh, see the flower beds? Oh, okay, I didn't know who the builder.
There's just a little part of the shed.
Actually, the pumpkins are great.
Um, I, my only request, and that's why I wanted to come to the meeting, was in May 20, in the May meeting, it was discussed that this would just be the line, just with everything that was not known. I would like to just follow the 50-foot no-line a little off.
That's a 25 right there you're pointing to.
This is the 50.
50-foot, this is no structural line here?
Yeah.
Labeled it as 50, oh, no structure.
No structure, yeah.
I would just like to try to follow the lot instead of having that be the end-all, be-all, is there any, will we allow it to follow?
Make this a little bit more open over here.
Yep, and then.
And put whatever preparations you need us to do over here, fine.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a great idea because then we've got a little restoration, right?
Yep.
Maybe it's not removing the silt, but it's a little rest, maybe some planting of something. And then in the same crap, they get what they're looking for.
Okay, so let me make sure I'm understanding this, okay? I mean.
This is the wetland.
This has been me for six months over this, I have lost unbelievable sleep over this.
We're just catching up, we're just being brought up to speed.
Join the club, we lose sleep over wetlands all the time.
This is a 25-foot, no touch, no underarm.
So this is, this is the, this is the rock wall, this is the existing rock wall.
Yes.
Okay, all of this, because this also, this same rock wall also extends three other properties, all the other, all four of those properties, okay? So in the May meeting, this was basically said, fine, leave it as is, nothing further beyond the rock wall. And I drove four hours to get here today because I live up in the Berkshues now, next to, next to Albany, thinking because Proline has put in the request for the certificate of conformity or whatever it's called, COC. Yeah, and that this was basically gonna be fine, let's approve it, that's what we agreed on last time, no problem. Now.
Well, that's the same paper that says that we agreed to it, but we never saw it.
Well, that's what I, when I saw this letter, I thought, when the hell do they talk to you guys?
They didn't.
Nobody's talked to us. So the day after we signed purchase and sale, the next day, Proline came on and just did their thing. My wife was, the movers were unpacking, they're like, we're here, the town sent us to.
Was that the conservation?
Well, the Proline identified themselves saying the town sent them and they were allowed on the property and my wife is like, I don't know what's going on, I don't know what, we literally were unloading a moving truck.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden everyone was walking into my backyard, I'm like, thank God my dog wasn't out, they would have.
So the rock wall, and we, everybody agreed, it's fine, so on and so forth. Now, and I'm sorry, because I don't, I really did not know you guys until tonight.
Because of COVID, we never met.
We never met.
Tara.
Tara, okay. Um, now they are making a special request, okay, to be able to, to move out, you know, because, yeah, some of those trees were cut down because they almost fell on our house, okay? And I'm sorry, when you've got an 83-year-old elderly mother living with you in a wheelchair, you don't need to have a big freaking tree fall over your house. So we had to have it cut down, okay? And that was early on, so anyway. This sounds to me like it's a new request for another, for another variance.
Not another variance, they would have to apply to the commission to do what they want to do. You could have had the same choice.
So this has nothing to do with me then?
Nothing.
Hmm.
Yeah, your shed's not going anywhere, you're free to go.
Come to Zoom too, you wanted to visit Dayton.
No, because I thought I was gonna come away with paperwork, it's gotta get, no, it's gotta get, um, recorded at the deeds office or someplace.
The paperwork is here and then we, once we close and then they sign, I bring the information and then they sign and I.
To who?
To the commission and then I can.
So is that another month?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
I'll get the paperwork done.
We have no issue with the rock wall, we have no issues with that.
Yeah, I mean, because it was there.
I mean, we have no issue with like the shed, that whole piece that.
Bob from Proline said that this rock wall has been there for years, years and years and years.
I do remember it.
So I mean, it's been there forever.
It's a terrible looking, it's a terrible looking rock wall.
Well, we built the one by your front, by the, where the steps go up, the front door, we had that one built. If you want the guy's name, he's fantastic because he's done all rock walls in Dayton.
I don't even need that fancy of a rock wall in the back, like by wetlands, like no one's seen it, I just don't need to look like that.
So that'll be a whole separate request?
A separate request.
Okay.
We don't have to go all the way back there.
No, okay, so if you're gonna do something.
Beyond this point here, beyond that point there, you literally cannot traverse the land. I mean, you can, if you're a mountain walker.
You can't, you can't build or you can't do anything.
You can't even walk in it.
This isn't build, this is.
Or is it that bad, that wet?
It, it, it's not wet, it's just, um, a lot of, most of the trees in this whole area are all dying or dead.
And the ticks will carry you away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, that was our biggest thing is we just wanted, when I heard in May that it was, the rock wall was gonna be it, I didn't know, we were new to town. I saw my lane, my name on that frontline paper, I didn't know what I needed to do, so I called Lisa and said, when's the next meeting? I just want to come and make sure that this is discussed.
A request, a request for.
Well, we'll, let's, the, the issue at hand is the COC, so do you want to vote on that? And then we need theirs, I need to actually go out and look at it with them and figure out what they actually want to do.
Okay.
And then they can file an RDA, I don't think they need to hire a surveyor for this or anything, they can sketch it on that if you want to coordinate that.
Yeah, and I have, I have no problem having Lisa come out to the house presenting it to you, I just, my fear was when I heard in May, we're just gonna use this rock wall as an end-all, be-all, I was like, wait a second, I need to come to a meeting because I, I, I want to be able to present my side, I, I'll go whatever way I have to. Um, I just wanted to make sure that it was done right, you know, I apologize, I'm new to town.
You said that a couple times.
Okay, so as long as I understand correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, these are two separate issues?
Yeah, the commission already voted last meeting.
The certificate of compliance is, is finished.
It's finished, okay, now, now we have a.
We're gonna vote on it, we're gonna vote on it.
And so by going out and doing what, all back here, because you know the area that we had cleared out?
And then they will put in an RDA.
Yeah, they'll have.
We're gonna have it, wood benches and music and lights and everything along with what we call a zen den.
Oh, yeah, that, uh, the snow didn't do so well with that.
Oh, they didn't?
Collapsed right in.
It did?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
My dog was not happy, that was her poop spot. She kept her, kept her out of the snow and then it collapsed.
Oh, is she not a dog?
No, she comes in, she likes to watch, hi.
We got four. Oh, we used to have five.
Okay, so.
No problem, she has a certificate of compliance and then the RDA.
As long as, it was the certificate of client didn't say anything about us keeping the rock wall, that's as long as.
Then you, then you'll start a new filing.
Certificate of compliance is going to say that.
But then your request.
But we can request to change it.
Yes.
Okay.
Cloud, request a determination.
Okay, totally fine.
A request to be chairman, applicability, RDA.
Okay.
And then we can fight about it.
You can just.
Oh, good.
Take this map.
Please not.
This is a very spirited commission.
What you wanna do, and then we can say, it, it does apply or it doesn't apply, and, and then you can be on your way.
Yeah, so avoidance is the first step, so you know we're gonna want you to stay on the 25-foot.
Yeah.
And then, minimization.
This is the one you have to please.
No, that's, I, and she, Lisa's been great, I've had a multiple conversations with her, she's been.
It would be great if you were here and you owned the house, like he did. He, he, it would be a big difference.
Thanks. He does own the house.
Now.
Okay, so can we have a vote, so I can go home? I got four hours to drive home, please.
I go to, you take your Mercedes and go home.
I wish I had a Mercedes.
Are you on your bike?
Lexus, no, my, my Harley. No.
You came in a bike?
No. No, no, I don't, no, I don't ride at night.
No, I don't.
No, I don't ride at night.
Okay, wait, Lisa, was there a, a motion, I mean, was there, um?
There wasn't a vote last meeting.
We voted to issue a certificate of compliance at our last meeting.
Was it in the minutes, is it in the minutes?
Charlie.
Look at the minutes, Lisa. When I prepared these minutes, I was looking right at us talking.
Where is it?
Minutes.
Oh, wait, 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 I put the minutes away. But, oh, Charlie, they hadn't actually filed the paperwork, so we couldn't vote on it, because they hadn't filed this yet.
You've got a hot treat here.
The paperwork just came in with Bob Barabee's letter.
It was voted on, voted on last meeting.
But the paperwork just came in, so.
Because at the, at the May meeting, the discussion was that they, um, they voted on it as to what it was. We had to get what was agreed, so that Bob could write the letters and get them off too.
And that's why I said, did you know this? And then I talked to Proline, and they said, they had assumed.
All the protection and mitigation is regular.
Yeah.
Were you satisfied that we voted?
On what now?
Don't take it first.
This is the one that we talked about right now.
No, it's fine. Yeah, I, that.
Okay.
Original home on the front.
But Charlie, the thing is, we didn't actually have it to vote on yet, so.
Good, we'll sign it tonight.
We didn't have the actual paperwork, that was how we were waiting for, yeah.
Yeah, now you have to vote on the paperwork.
Sign it tonight. Good.
It, yes, it was, okay, it is here, it is here in the minutes.
I spent three and a half hours watching that Monday and talking notes.
So, you're getting your certificate of compliance.
Get it right, I know you didn't say it was.
In order to do the.
Cast forward on that part.
I'm the one that gets it.
Okay, okay, and to, you, you have to file for, with an RDA to make that alter, well, it's not an alteration, it's just a, well, it is, but, um.
Well, you're planning on cutting some trees then. Don't cut over 35,000 square feet of, of trees.
They're not gonna hear you.
Because you'll have to answer to a different commission, and it won't be good.
They couldn't.
I, I love the, I love the fact that the layout, I love the fact that the trees are there.
Measure and multiply and stay under 35,000 square feet.
The whole line is in 35,000.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Believe me, the, the other commission's worse than we are.
Well, well, wait, wait a minute, we're not even at that point yet.
Okay.
I don't think they're going that.
Is your all set?
Well, have we voted? I haven't heard a vote.
No.
I don't, I don't have the paperwork ready to give them tonight, I didn't know they were coming, yeah.
I don't know, Charlie.
Well, we can sign it anyway, you can email.
There's nothing to sign, this is their request. I don't have the paperwork on our end to give them.
When you sign, when you get it, ready.
Of course, Monday.
We'll do it.
And so, and then what, you, you just sign it, and then what do you?
I'll send it certified to you.
Certified, okay, do you want me to give you my address?
I need that, you wanna put it on that yellow, um.
Have any qualms? She's just got the request.
Uh, yeah, just give it to me, because no one else is here.
Okay. Hey, drive safely.
No, no, I'm not leaving yet, you're not, you're not rid of me yet.
Okay.
Well, we have a lot of other people still to hear, I mean, we have other things going on.
Okay, so, just so that I understand, one last time, we have the certificate of compliance, conformity, whatever, COC, and then Lisa will get everything processed and, and certify it out to us.
Yeah.
We have to sign it.
Yeah, you guys have to sign it, and then we take that and we file that with the registry of deeds, right?
Right.
Okay.
And these people won't have anything on their, their deed, they'll be gone.
It's all, all, everything's gone, okay.
Unless you're waiting for something regarding the septic, I don't know.
I don't think so.
No, everything was signed off on that.
I think everything was cleared with the septic, and the only thing that came up was the wetlands when they were there.
Um, so what is the normal, so that I don't start bugging people, what's the normal turnaround time?
Six months.
Not five years?
No, I'll get it done next week, so you should have it like a week from Monday at the latest, okay? Well, three to five business days.
Do you have an attorney in town?
Do I have an attorney in town?
Well, it has to be recorded in the registry of deeds here, are you gonna come back here to draw it?
It has to be recorded here, yeah, Taunton, he's right.
Um, we called the registry office and they said we could mail it in.
COVID, wow.
Okay, all right.
So.
All right, I'm just trying to make it easier for you, but you made it easier.
Well, if I don't, I'm, well, I've got, I have this many attorneys, so, because we got ourselves quite lawyered up. So, we, do we have to have an attorney submit it to the deeds office?
No.
Okay, I wanna make it simple, just so that we can put this all in the bag.
He likes to make things hard.
No.
He's an old school teacher.
Oh, is he?
He'll make it easy for the students.
No, I was trying to make it easy, I'm saying, don't come, if you got a lawyer here, have him do it. But you can do it, you can do it yourself, I've done it so much on my, on my own, just go in and pay a simple fee, rather than having someone else do it and charging an extra hundred, two hundred.
I've asked, actually asked, uh, Ruben and his staff if they would take it.
Oh, there you go. All right, thank you.
We gotta get going on this, we got a long way to go. Okay, are we gonna move on here, Lisa?
Yeah, we need to move on.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Just, um, reach out to me, Monday and Tuesday are really busy for me this week, so.
We can do another week, we're in no rush.
All right.
I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Thank you, yeah, bye-bye, goodnight.
That's, that's a ETA of 12:30.
I'm sorry.
ETA 12:30.
For me?
Four hours.
Yeah, about that, and, and not in this dark.
Drive careful.
Okay, uh, 1050 William Street, Reed Brothers.
He's here. Blue Stone. Steve, are you here to give us an update? I know I received an email, but you're here, so that's great.
He's just muted, he needs to unmute himself.
Oh, I wish we could mute more people.
There's a way for you to request him to unmute if he, he's trying to.
Okay, I can actually.
Or we can chat to him too, and say.
Yeah, chat. All right.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Welcome aboard.
Uh, I have no news, um, to give to you guys. Uh, I've reached out to Outback a couple of times in the past week, left a message, uh, the second time, haven't gotten a call back. I, I received an email or a phone call and I got muted, um, that's, that's all I have to tell you.
Uh, that's because they reached out to me.
Oh, good, uh, so maybe you.
I spoke with Jason directly, um, because I had to speak with him about some other projects.
Okay.
And, let's see, he had, is it Greg? Greg.
Greg, Greg, that works for me?
No. No, um, Greg Drake from, um, Outback.
Okay, I don't know him.
Okay, here we go, um, sent this, um, response to me because I invited them to the meeting. On Tuesday, the 15th. Lisa, just sending a quick update on William Street remediation project. All the field work for the survey is complete. We are in the process of adding the information into CAD to update the existing conditions information. We will start working on the wetland mitigation plan next week. Let me know if you have any further questions, thanks, Greg. So that sounds like everybody's making good progress, I mean, considering everyone's really busy, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Thank you for staying on top of this and making it a priority, we know you guys are in the busy season.
No, no, it's gonna be done soon, um, yeah, if you hear anything, you should just keep me, keep me posted, and, um, as soon as we have something to work with, we'll get to work.
Sounds good, yeah, as soon as there's a plan, then we'll bring it before the, you guys will bring it before the commission, and we'll agree or disagree or change a few things and figure out what needs to happen to restore the wetlands out there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to, uh, 2396 Puzzles Street.
Okay, he's not here either, huh?
What was that about, Lisa? That's, uh, Burdos.
Yep, Burdos, here we go, um, I spoke with Lighthouse directly, I, I, because I had to speak with them about another project as well, and they said it is on their agenda to be taking care of the notice of intent for him. Um, but the last time I heard from him was May 5th. So, that's the update, I will follow up.
Okay, uh, 2040 County Street, David DeRosa, enforcement order.
I don't see him present. However, I received a phone call from, um.
Can't be any richer than he was, then, he's still broke.
Yeah, I received a phone call from, uh, let's see, Selectman, um, Zalachakis, Brett, um, saying that he received a phone call from David DeRosa, and David DeRosa was expressing his concern, saying he wasn't gonna be able to afford to hire a wetland scientist to restore this, had some financial difficulties, and we saw in the email that he sent, he's having some issues like that. Brett told him he needed to continue to communicate with us and keep us apprised of what was happening, and just fill us in, and, you know, stay cooperative, but here we are at the meeting, I invited him to the meeting and he didn't, he didn't even reply.
Okay, well, I think his business is now located in Berkeley.
Yeah, what he has of it.
Yeah, it's located in Triple R's old garage.
I'm sorry?
It's located in Triple R's old garage over in Berkeley.
Okay.
And he's, and he's having issues over there also.
Well, the pile of dirt that's in the wetland has been there since Tony Roderick's managed the property. It's not going anywhere. The wetlands aren't gonna get any bigger or any smaller. So, there's nothing going on there.
Well, I mean, as long as there's not more active dumping.
Well, you did, we, enforcement order said that he had to, to fly, and he agreed to do that, now he can't afford.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to, uh, 1566 Cedar Street.
Matt, are you there?
I am.
Matt, I know, uh, my video's not working because I'm actually, um, in person at the meeting, so.
Okay, yeah, the conservation one was working earlier and it stopped.
So I'll follow up with David DeRosa.
I didn't touch anything.
Remind him that we would like to. Get some sort of communication, continue.
And then this zooms in on whoever's talking, so whoever talks, that thing just kinda moves around.
Oh, cool. Okay, so, Matt, do you wanna tell the commission what's happening out there, and I haven't given them an update?
Last time we met out there with you, with, uh, my botanist, Stephen, he's gonna be coming out Saturday to mark and flag everything that him and you had discussed, and then from there, you can approve his markings and, um, then we can get, uh, the engineer out there to, uh, flag and locate all those points, and then come up with our mediation.
Okay, Lisa, this is the property you and I visited, okay?
1566 Cedar is your, is your address. And what is the botanist's name again?
Stephen Schmeele.
Okay. So, yeah, we met and we went over each individual area, um, so Matt is even willing to clean up some areas that had been there, filled by his previous owner.
Right.
Realizing that he's encroached into his wetland, um, as well with the paddock, but.
We had problems with the previous owner, at that same property.
That's, that's where he's selling, yeah.
Yeah, so Matt is willing to fix some of what the previous owner had done.
Okay.
Okay? And, and, um, he's been.
How long have you been growing the beard?
Uh, for a while, last year, but I, I did trim it up though.
Only metal.
It's gonna sow cuff drops.
Yeah, it's coming off, it's getting too warm for it. But, um, but yes, Stephen will be out, uh, Saturday, hopefully, and get all that marked out and get this done with.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate your time, thanks for checking in with us.
Yeah, I'll let you know once he has that marked.
Great, yeah, I mean, you know, I know you wanted to start doing some stuff sooner than later, so.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All righty, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, 1035 William Street, that's just up two, three houses from Reed.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, 1035 William Street, he, I don't believe he's here, um, Robert, um, so, since we last met, Robert has, um, retained Outback to.
They're the ones who did the property originally, yeah.
Yeah, to relocate the wetland line. I spoke with Robert a couple days ago, and I said, hey, Outback relocated the line, but we also need the 25-foot no-touch, marked with stakes out there. I, I told Robert I'd be willing to work with him to come up with some sort of restoration, um, because he has cut in the wetlands. And, you know, it's becoming an ongoing problem, I think I told you guys the last meeting, you know, the larger the house is, the more yard they want, they don't want the kids playing in the front yard, believe it or not.
Is this, is this the one right across from Reed Stanton?
Yeah.
Yes.
Diagonally north.
Yeah, no, no, it's, uh.
Now, is this a Reed property originally?
It was.
Used to be, that's where, that's where Freddie lived.
So they're.
Freddie built the house.
They're also in an ORW there, so it's the same resources that Blue Stone had, um, has, you know? So basically, any fill in that wetland, thank goodness he didn't, he didn't fill, except for the fact that I believe he filled some to build that garage that was not permitted by the commission. So, basically what happened was a couple years ago, and I can give you guys the real timeline on this, um.
It's the house next to Freddie's houses, the new house, next to Freddie's house.
If I have it here.
Well, yeah, no, it is, yeah, it is a new house, yeah, yeah. They didn't build that one, Steve just built that one, yeah. I thought there was only the one.
I don't have, I don't, I can't believe I don't have his. Okay. So, the house was built a couple years ago, and he was not, he, he was sold it by TLC Development. So the house was built a couple years ago and he was not, he, he was sold it by TLC Development. Um, TLC told him there's probably some wetlands out there and they need to be careful. Um, apparently he closed in two thousand twenty. He said he rushed in and out at the closing because it was COVID and he didn't really pay attention to the paperwork to know that he had wetland. Since then, he's cut some trees. I guess a tree had fallen close to where his kid was playing and then he decided he was gonna cut some trees down. Um, he also built the garage. So I'm not really sure how that all worked as far as not knowing there was an order. Um, the engineer that came out to do the garage had a completely different wetland line on the plan and showed him outside of the one-hundred foot, but the one you guys approved showed him inside and he's definitely inside. Um, so now here we are. He's stopped all the clearing. Um, I told him he could, you know, take some of the wood that's laying there out, but otherwise he's gonna have to plant some trees, plant some shrubs, come up with some restoration. I'm almost positive the garage is within fifty feet. Um, so hopefully he's willing to work with us a little bit more to, to do a little bit more on that site. We can't make him take the gar- I mean, it wouldn't be right to make him take the garage down, but I would like to see him do the necessary steps to make sure that he's in, he's, as much as he can be in compliance. And rest, restoring.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I just told him that he could stake his own twenty-five-foot no-touch. He didn't have to have Outback do that. Um, so he was happy to hear that. He's a pretty busy guy. He's self-employed, so. We play a little bit of phone tag and things, but I think, um, I think he's also, like Matt, willing to work with us.
Okay. Someone who I don't think is gonna be willing to work with anyone is two, three, seven, one County Street. The enforcement order by the stormwater.
Yeah, actually, um, you wanna give an, an update? We went to the site, um, with the stormwater committee, two, three, seven, one county.
I, I don't know if that was a restaurant, a church, or...
It was an ice cream parlor.
Ice cream parlor, okay. Now, I believe it's a two-family house.
I stopped every night on the way home from work, bought some ice cream there.
Okay, I, I think it's a, is it a two-family house now, Lisa, or don't you know?
Uh, it's at least a two-family house.
Okay, behind the property, uh, I'm gonna say twenty to thirty feet behind it, the land just drops down to the railroad bridge, to the railroad tracks. About fifty, sixty, seventy feet of that has been filled in with everything. It's been filled in with, uh, rocks, with tree stumps, with, with construction debris, uh, with grass clippings and, uh, logs, you name it, it's in there. And I'm gonna say somewhere between fifty and seventy feet behind the building, up closer to the railroad tracks and maybe a hundred feet or more in length along the tracks. Um, water has been impounded, uh, so now that there is a pool there, uh, I mean, it's, it's horrendous, uh, to see that slope and, and that. So, so, um, Stormwater is now in charge. They've issued an enforcement order, um...
Yeah, we issued an enforcement order with them.
Okay.
Uh, the select board had asked that we do that.
Do we have to sign, we gotta sign them?
Um, we did, you did.
Okay.
Um, in addition, so...
I have a question. Maybe Lisa can answer it.
Okay, maybe. There's an intermittent stream down there, too.
Right, and it goes, and the, the stream goes right through the Harbor Masters property.
Yep.
Remember that?
Yeah, I got your signature.
The stream went through the Harbor Masters property. It loops around there and that's where it's, that's what's partially blocked.
Well, it, it shouldn't possibly block because the neighbor just north of this filled in the railroad tracks completely from County Street right into his backyard.
Begins with K.
That railroad track ran right through, right by the post office, right across, uh, Pleasant Street. Always did. When the, you remember the construction business that was on, where, where there now is the auto auction? On Mings, on, uh, County Street, right next to the Patrick store. Alright. It was a construction there. Portuguese guy.
Yeah.
Pavel.
Yeah. In about two days, they filled from County Street right into, uh, the adjoining property. Filled it right in, right so you could drive in from one end to the other. That railroad track always ran right straight through, always leveled ground. That stream that we're talking about, or the wetland area, is buried in the pot of that fill that was put in, I don't know how many years ago. But it happened just like that. The guy had a mountain of stuff to get rid of and he got rid of it. Yeah.
Um, what, what this gentleman said, the owner, was that he was allowing it be dumped by a local business.
Yeah, a landscaper. He was allowing him to come in and, uh, and it was active now. He gave us the name of the, uh, the landscaper.
So, um, I asked, there's an attorney involved, so this is good. They know they're in trouble. Um, John Mitchell's the attorney. And I asked him to come tonight and he couldn't come, but he sent this in. Ms. Caledonia, as discussed by telephone yesterday, I cannot attend tonight's meeting of the ConCon because of another longstanding commitment I have. My understanding is that two, three, seven, one County Street issue will be on the July fifteenth agenda. I will inform the cli- my client, Russell Enos, whom I have also advised that neither he nor the Whitmoors are to affect the fill at issue until the Dighton boards involved have heard the matter. I thank you for your kind cooperation, John Mitchell.
Okay, so we're, we'll hear from them, uh, within the next month and, and maybe the stormwater will, uh, will do a little, maybe they'll push even more.
Yeah, I actually attend those meetings, so I can give you an update.
Lisa, uh, while we're talking about that, I know the stormwater is involved in the Taunton issue and the river issue. I, I, I really think that Dighton Conservation per se should stay out of it.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not saying that you can't go stormwater, but give advice to them, let them speak. Don't you as a...
Right. I ha- yeah, I only spoke about it one time.
Okay, you know, because...
And it was just to give the commission a little bit of advice.
Right, that's, that's what's good. You give them advice as much as you can, but let them do the speaking because I, this is, this can't be commission against commission.
No.
And, and I can inform these people after, towards the end here. Uh, I'll, I'll do it at the very end, what's going on.
And, since you're active with the Coast Stormwater Committee, I have a question.
Sure.
The current bylaw was approved by the Board of Health. The current bylaw doesn't, if I read correctly, it was revisited in two thousand and nine
Yeah.
to update the amount of fill that you had to put in before you had to file.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say anything about stormwater committees. That bylaw says the planning board
Yep.
has jurisdiction and the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction. What the Stormwater Commission is doing right now is illegal. They don't have the authority to do what they're doing, period.
Well, I don't know about that, but I, I know they're, they're redoing that bylaw.
I don't have a problem with them doing something, but they should change the bylaw to give them the authority to do what they're doing. They don't have a legal leg to stand on right at the moment. It doesn't mention stormwater committees. It only says that the planning board is an agent
And the Conservation, I know, I bet it...
of the Board of Health, and the Conservation Commission is an agent of the Board of Health. I yellow-marked it and I'll send it to you or send it to them. But they should cover their butt, because their butt right now is ready to be kicked.
By?
Okay.
By whom?
By anybody.
Okay.
Every action they make as a stormwater committee is illegal. They don't have the power to do what they're doing. Not under the bylaw that the Board of Health passed. Simple as that. I read it three times.
Okay.
And I yellow-streaked it and I'll provide it to you if you want it. I'll email you a copy and then you make your decision. But right now they're in very, very shaky ground.
Okay. Lincoln Avenue?
Yeah, I was just trying to find that email right here. What is the gentleman's name again?
That was a tree removal.
Doesn't say.
Said we don't get paid enough.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I got an update from them and I visited the site, um, basically, um...
Still waiting for the tree to come down.
The tree came down last month.
The wind blew it down or you got a...
No, it got cut, it's cut. Um, they planted some dogwoods along, a couple dogwoods along the river.
Well, you're, okay, you're talking Lincoln Avenue?
Yeah, Lincoln Ave.
Okay.
Brand.
That, and that tree stump, that filled the whole truck.
Here it is. And I got an email from him. Hello, Lisa?
That filled the whole truck. Family Tree Service.
Yes. So they did get some
He local?
mulch. They did put some mulch, but it's up near the stone wall. They planted some dogwoods lower. They're actually talking about bringing in some loam in the fall, so we'll talk to them again before the fall and bringing in some, um, seed mixes. I had sent them seed mixes and species to go possibly use, but they sent me an email. It says, hello, Lisa, we spent Saturday afternoon at Sylvan Farm in Westport getting some wetland plants. This is on June first. We planted them yesterday like you suggested. They even planted some herbaceous stuff. We are now also keeping bike, bikes off the conservation land. You may have some have also noticed that the tree is gone by the stump that's still there. And they put a sign up that says, no bikes, please. Um, it looks pretty good.
Yeah, no, um, they had, they had about fifteen, twenty yards of wood chip. They were just dumping along the banks of the river. And I'm going by and I see the truck actually blocking the road as he's ready to dump it and I said, stop! Because all that would have washed into the river and floated down the Fall River.
Yeah, I told them, I told them the last time not to use wood chips.
It's gonna float down the river.
Right.
But the good news is...
If you wanna do something like that...
It's on the upper.
Yeah, well, that's one thing, but if you wanna dress it up or something, you get stump, ground stump chips. Because those hold in place. Those are biodegradable, they rot down, and they're humus. Uh, stuff will grow up through them and they stay. But they have to be ground stump chips.
So, so they lie flat and hard?
Right. Well, they, they, it's just the whole process. The stump is the densest part of the tree. And when that's ground, it's all interwoven. So when it goes down, you can pack it and, you know.
They were gonna dig out the stump, which would have left a huge hole along the bank and...
Well, I mean, that...
No, it would have been all good. Go naturally. Okay, I'm gonna give you a, a brief report on Taunton. A couple months ago, I'm coming home from Rehoboth and there's a cop out on the road blocking the traffic and then, then he's letting us go by and I'm looking, on the Taunton side of the Sagrante, they were blasting. And I'm looking at all this, this rock blown to, blown up to hell, gone. And I'm looking, I'm saying, they were next to the river, next to our water supply. So I drive into the water department and said, do you know what they're doing? And they said, oh, that's why that building is shaking. The whole, uh, the water treatment plant was shaking, the, the whole area shook with it. And there was a lot of rocks they blasted.
Oh, no, I know. I went right there the other day.
So, I called, I don't know if I called Lisa, I called a few people and, and, uh, now, and they're doing almost the same thing on the north side of forty-four.
But no blasting?
No blasting on the north side, but they, they filled in half of a stream which, which flows into the Sagrante.
Which is in Taunton.
And so, Lisa's, they need...
It's all in Taunton now.
Uh, it's all in Taunton, so, um, there's a slop on it now that they, they need to fill the water. They're gonna wreck our water supply.
It's all part of the Sagrante, uh, uh, river shed, the watershed.
Yeah, ORW.
They're gonna ruin our water supply, because they could have ruined our, our treatment plant.
Well, anyway. It isn't so much that, Jim, but there's wells over there.
Right.
They start blasting, you can change the flow of the water. Not I'm saying they do or did, but they can.
You said, Lisa, that, that the water department's having a study done for damages?
Um, yeah, well, what they did was they had Wooden and Karin write an opinion letter that, um, in their opinion, that basically there could have been a lot of, they don't know. It's, it's questionable what the damage is to the wells.
You don't know. You can, you lose your flow, you can gain your flow.
And the water treatment facility, you know, um...
Okay. Okay, so I guess, I guess we're finished for tonight then. Um, is there a motion to...
Yes, I motioned that we, uh, adjourn the meeting at nine oh five P.M.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.